This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I want to thank everyone for attending today. For those that are online, please make sure that your go-to meeting is mute until you either have an opportunity to speak. If you are in the room, everyone, please put their phones on mute. I do need a motion for a special privilege for Mr. Guy and Flavia to attend via web meeting.
I surrender.
Second.
Isn't that your finding exceptional circumstances?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
I will call the vote all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, we will start with public comment.
A little tongue-in-cheek there.
It's a new rock and roll group, right?
I heard a bad rumor that this organization was thinking about putting she-shells, seashells, down by our median at the north end of Gateway Boulevard.
Greatly exaggerated, Joe.
Greatly exaggerated. Well, I'm glad to hear that because I think it's a terrible idea. I think it'd be nice if there was some communication with either the advisory group or the board at Stony Brook if things are going to be considered to do anything in the median. But I'd also like to mention something that I remember when we were pulling out or going to cut down palm trees some years ago, thank God we did, because the north end of, I think, Gateway looks great when you drive into from 82. And then I asked Scott, "Scott, what about the stressed concrete reinforced poles if you're worrying about things that are not frangible?" I hadn't even thought about it at the time. Think about that. Well, right now, you're talking about taking down bushes. I think that's a bad idea. I think that they actually are a safety issue because at nighttime, it's a windy road and they block headlights. The miniature big Zora there block the headlights of oncoming cars. Plus, they look great and will maintenance.
And they're a frangible tree.
And they're pretty frangible too, yeah. That's about it. I think it's a bad idea, and we'd like some input if, in fact, something is going to change there. End of my thing.
Yeah, we were looking at options, Joe, and as soon as I think we get some options together, we can socialize a little bit more.
I think it'll be a great idea. Nice to meet you. Take care.
All right, next we have Kathleen Flaherty, North Gateway Median.
Hi, I'm Kathy Flaherty, Stony Brook, and I'm talking about the same thing as Joe McCoka. However, if you look there at the median right now, all the mulch they've put there is on the road. So that's where the shells would be too. So, because they took out all the peanuts, so there's nothing there anymore. So there has to be another alternative from that. And I also think that you need to come to Stony Brook and discuss it with the Stony Brook residents because it is important to them. I mean, the royal palms were moved, we were able to save them. So now we want to make sure we save the medians too. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I do not have anyone online requesting to speak or by fax or email.
Okay, great. So we will move on to staff reports. We'll start with district council.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the agenda packet is the latest draft, it's called 410, 22 revision draft of the Permit Criteria Manual for continued review and discussion of the proposal. It's scheduled for a public hearing in July. And this was an opportunity if the board had other further amendments that they wished to make or amendments they wished to make to the Permit Criteria Manual in addition to those that have been proposed by staff which have been indicated in redlining. And when this gets to the point of the public hearing, I'll make sure the formatting and the page numbering is correct. It's been an interesting challenge. If you recall, when we prepared this years ago, it was a combination of a number of different Word documents resulting in this document. So, and we talked before, the idea of having various specifications, sole source for certain capital equipment for operational maintenance purposes, consistency in budget purposes, and also the board, the opportunity for the board and its recent discretion based upon sound engineering operational principles could approve alternate specifications and designs to the standards. And that was added also. But we specifically added language at the bottom of Roman numeral page 3-8 in that page about lift stations. We'll use fixed Thompson bypass pumps. We also talked about hydro service, control panels. And again, this is a bona fide, in my opinion, invalid reason to be limited for like a single or sole source because of the unique nature of these facilities and the consistency in operation, ease of operation and maintenance. So I don't know if there are any other thoughts or questions that the board had or comments the board wants to make or revisions before we go to the public hearing. And at the public hearing, you can still make some additional changes if you wish.
Tony, I know we talked about in circumstances where there is, let's just say, repeat offenders of the permit criteria. I know that we had some construction sites where there was some misuse or, you know, about being able to adjust the fee schedule, which would add incremental increases to penalties for those that do not adhere after being warned or even penalized. I can't remember if we, where we-
Let me see if we addressed that. I may not have included that. And I guess the question we talked about-
And I think the example was they were tapping in.
Tapping. Oh, they were tapping.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they were tapping in and-
Illegal tapping.
Illegal tapping. And I think there should be some severity for those repeat offenders. I know that the staff does as good a job as they can as far as alerting, you know, the powers that be. But if we are enforcing penalties and fines, I think, you know, shame when you want, but twice, it should really hit you where it hurts.
Yeah, I believe, well, I think that the staff has been pretty much following sort of statutory scheme that provides for the amount that can be assessed against, I'll call it, using that term literally.
And I can't remember if we have the ability to influence that, those fees, or if there is a statute that-
Excuse me, Mr. Bloom just walked in the room. I know.
Where were the trumpets?
I'm sorry, that's, I need, I apologize. I apologize, Doug. I just was-
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I was kind of taken aback. I haven't seen Steven in the boardroom so long.
It's only here, almost.
Pardon?
Last time I think you were here was last August.
Your annual visit. Thank you. I will double check that to make sure and then work with our staff on that.
Yeah.
I know we, again, there's a statutory scheme that talks about theft or tampering and how we can obtain recovery in those instances. And so we're talking about bolstering that in the permit criteria.
Good.
Yeah, I got another one. This came up as a result of the Callaway Greens fiasco that the guys are working with. And that is somehow, some way, anybody that's doing work in here, that they come through and they, let's say, do something that is not agreeable and not in accordance with the terms of the Permit Criteria Manual, but let's say we don't catch it for two, three, four years. For example, a pipe that they installed, directional bore, and it goes through and penetrates a pipe, and then we catch it later. Do we have, what provisions do we have for recovery?
Initially, I don't believe, for example, the, I don't think the district gets involved in reviewing any plans or specs whenever we have a contractor that comes in to do utility subsurface boring. I think it's a right-of-way permit that's issued by Lee County typically. And I don't know if we issue any right-of-way permits for any district roads.
But let's say a developer is one of our few remaining properties is being constructed by the developer, and his contractor directional bores, let's say, a two-inch pipe, and he goes through an eight-inch gravity sewer. And we can't figure out why the water level in our pump stations five years down the road is so high. We go back and we find the pipe that he installed. What can we do about it?
Tony, I'm familiar with the situation that Mr. Tinkle has brought up. Personally saw the repairs done the last two days. That's something I believe you and I can speak to, perhaps off-record, or I might could speak with Mr. Tinkle individually and address it. I think the concern is, after the fact, damage to our system, how can we go back and recoup those lost, the incurred costs for repairs? So-
As long as we can prove that it was-
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't know if we need to have it in the Permit Criteria Manual in order to do that, as long as it's within a statute of limitations timeframe. But I think one might be helpful, and we talk offline, is the idea of when a developer comes in, and it's obvious that some of the plans involve subsurface boring, that we can increase the amount of the bond, because we have a bond requirement that's in there as far as any impact to district facilities.
But a lot of those bonds are released before, relaxed, before we find out about it.
What we can say is, as to that aspect of the bond attributable to any subsurface boring activities, but we can hang onto that for a longer period of time.
What I'm trying to do is to tie the developer with the firm that actually did the work. Because a lot of times, the developer doesn't even know that the guy did what he did.
But again, that gets back, and we can talk about it again. If we have the developer post-
I just want to make sure we get our back sides.
Larger bonds that includes anticipated cost for any damage to district infrastructure from subsurface boring, and that portion of the bond can stay later.
I mean, it's almost like we're trying to eliminate any indemnification over time.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah.
And I think, and we can talk about that, but again, I think part of it might be whatever viewing takes place, you know, after inspection of the work, inspections. So we'll talk and we'll figure out some language that can go in here as well as the approach on this issue.
If it's open-cut construction, that's one thing. You've got an opportunity to catch it. But if it's directional bore, be it one of our telecommunications companies, Comcast or any of those, you're never going to see it. You're not going to see it until after the fact. So I just want to make sure that we get ourselves covered. But I'm leery of going after the permit, the person who entered into the permit agreement with us, i.e. the developer, when he's going to come back and pass it down the road. We've had enough passing down the road.
Yeah.
Tried to tie it together somehow.
So Chelsea, you're going to take this away, circle back with Mr. Tinkle if there's additional information that's needed, and then work with Tony on if permit criteria needs to be updated or if we're covered under existing language in other places, then it should be okay.
Even if it puts us in a position of, you can't do that. I'd rather have it in there.
Or just, you-
I'd rather have it in there to begin with.
Mine your socks, because you're going to be held accountable-
That's right.
You know, whether it's today, tomorrow, or two years down the road.
Well, especially after what we saw today, but after what we saw two years ago over in Gateway Greens with, and you guys saw in Stony Brook, with the installation of the Comcast fiber. There's going to be more of that. And I mean, these guys coming in, they got one thing and one thing only in mind, and that's production of, like, get every foot you can get in the ground as quick as you can get it. And nobody knows if you hit anything until the guy's sewer backs up into his house. So I just want to make sure we're covered on that.
Tony, what else? Yeah?
On this, nothing else. Working on a number of projects we met with Chelsea on, so we have a checklist of items to work on. And we'll go over some of them are on the agenda for today. Otherwise, working with the bond financing team on the tight schedule, and Chelsea may help get you on that with regard to the timing of the various events that need to take place.
I'd like to ask that you make a phone call to our good friends down at Pavice, Mr. Mann, and see if we can't light a fire to get that-
Letter of authorization.
That letter of authorization so that that thing, I know that's what's holding Rick up.
Chelsea's been nudging him, I'll nudge him also.
Do you want to cover the bond consideration that we were talking about for the potential building use?
We can now, if you want.
We talked about it.
So, you know, we were, we have a facility's need, and we've been looking at, you know, different options to be able to grow our facilities as the district grows. There's a piece of property we authorize staff to look into. We also have the Commons Park pool area that could be leveraged. Chelsea and I spoke this morning, and if we were to leverage bond financing, the board just needs to be aware, and I think we've had this conversation several times, in order to use that, you know, public funds, there needs to be specifications on the use of that property, which would be, you know, public. So, and we've had the conversation before, if we, let's say, if we build an administrative building, if we do continue to leverage that land for parks or amenities or whatever, that it would be for public use in order to be able to get funding for it.
Yeah, we talked before, and some of the conversation has been a rate differential. And that's been done in many, many communities where you have residents who pay debt service in, on, and out on the property, either have no charge or nominal charge. Whereas non-residents who don't take, don't take care of the on and, don't do the debt service, pay a higher rate. So it's a rate differential.
So, to help the public understand, the district is going forward, as Tony alluded to, with a bond validation. The bond validation, it utilizes, and I got this from Sandy, she's from our bond team, that we, when we do this, we use tax-exempt financing. And so, any projects that we put as part of this bonding has to be open to the public, available use by the general public. That doesn't mean we can't charge non-residents. It just, it has, so a couple of things that have come up is the commons pool. And right now, it's only for, from my understanding, it's only for Gateway residents. It's not even open to non-residents. Moving forward, if we were to utilize this bond financing, it would-
For enhancement of that property.
For enhancement of the pool and/or the commons area in general, it has to be open to the public.
So the pool would be included even if we did something-
That is a policy decision. Now, if you choose to utilize the bond financing, it has to be open to the public. We could charge for the non-residents, yes, and the residents could stay free of charge. Now, you could choose to say, okay, we don't want to utilize the bond financing for the pool, for the commons pool. Well, then we have to come up with the money for renovations and maintenance and repair elsewhere.
So if we went to another property to, let's say, for the administrative purposes, what function of that building would be available to the public?
No, I think, like Chelsea was saying, the recreational components. When we're talking about administrative buildings versus recreational facilities, recreational facilities are needed.
Well, I'm talking, I'm talking about, I want to make sure I understand this. If we would put an admin building on the park property, and we got all the permits and the exclusions and all the other crap we have to go through, does that have ramifications on the other parts of the park?
No.
I don't believe-
Not unless, not unless we use, let's say, so if we have a, let's say, a Commons Park project, part of that project is to build out administrative/recreational administrative building. If we also part of that project, we leverage bond financing to build out a Phase One of the park, let's just say, you know, whatever that is.
But it's-
If we use public funds-
It's only when we use it for recreational.
Correct, that's the way I understand.
Correct. I mean, the utilization of the funds for administrative building, storage building, operations building, it's not open to the general public.
Now, the only exception would be is if that administrative building also had components, let's say if there's a multipurpose, a gymnasium, or a multipurpose room, or something along those lines.
You just don't do that.
Yeah. Or you, you know, you have to rent it.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think the bigger issue is the policy, if we are using bond funding to build an administrative building, and if we are going to, in addition, have conversation around, you know, possibly using that time period to start with a Phase One.
Keep them separate. Keep them separate. Have the building remote from any of the recreational activities associated with the park.
It's not even, it's really how we're going to fund it. It's really what, I think, where the point of consideration comes in, is how, if we are building an administrative building, how would we fund it? If we use bond dollars, okay. But I still think where the line gets cut is, is really around recreational use. What falls under the purview of parks and recreation or amenities?
But this issue came up years ago on utilization of county funds on the park. That's how we got into this mess in the first place.
That, yeah, that was a little bit different because the county for capital facilities, improvement to the original construction and subsequent construction of the Sherman complex, Lee County Parks and Recreation Impact，并s. And part of that, those funding agreements where Lee County said it needs to be open to the public at the same rates and fees or comparable, I can't remember the exact language, but it's in the agreement with Lee County as far as the soccer complex.
Ultimately, the decision with this bond, and I wanted to plant this in your minds for the 16th meeting, because that's ultimately when you're going to have to make the decision, is, do you want it to be, do you want the commons property to be open to the public or not? If it's open to the public, we can come up with fees as part of a fee schedule for the non-Gateway residents. If you, as a policy decision, say, we do not want it to open to Joe Schmo over in Fort Myers at all, then that's, that whole park project, we have to pull out of the bond financing and come up with an alternative method of funding.
It's a financing conversation, how we're going to finance improvements around our parks and recreation.
Yes.
So the administrative building, for me, is really a separate.
But there's nothing that says categorically that the cost that they pay or the fees they pay have to be equitable with what the residents pay.
It says that they should be customary and reasonable when compared to those fees charged for use of similar facilities in the area. So we would do comparisons to other parks and rec facilities locally and see what they would charge.
And we could probably do that, a comparison against our assessments.
And what we could also do, utilize the services, somebody like Russ White, and Russ has that kind of background, because there are some other CEDs around the state that do have recreational facilities, and they do have that rate differential rate schedule as for residents versus non-residents. And those are some examples.
This is already a controversial issue to begin with. Throw this into where our residents are picking up the tab to pay for or debt finance is just throwing gas on a fire. I wouldn't even go down that road, because any of them that were supportive of perhaps some improvements now finding out that they have to take and have this for other people, they're going to go through the roof.
Not if we sell fund. So if we sell fund, then we maintain and manage use requirements.
But that-
We use, we use-
Translated that use-
Alternative funding.
You're going to pay more. That's what it translated means. You're going to pay a higher-
Truthfully, truthfully, and I'm, we're kind of going down a rabbit hole here. The fees that you could charge to non-residents would help offset the cost to your residents. And, but as a policy decision, moving forward, because we're trying to get this bond financing pushed through, is it open to the public or not? And that's the decision that this board will have to make on the 16th.
Yeah.
So you have-
We just want to tee it up today. So, look, it is something we would need to consider.
But at this point in time, separating it out from the park versus admin, if we put the admin building there on the park property, I'm sorry.
Doesn't matter.
We can pay for that with a bond.
And we pay for it with a bond.
Yes.
Unless we put some recreational component on it, it is not open to the public.
Correct. I always say, by way of example, school board headquarters, it's a public facility, might be financed. Nobody can just walk in and say, hey, I want to use this building. South Florida Water Management District Administrative Offices, County Courthouses, County Offices, General Administrative Buildings, Maintenance Gardens, those kind of things. They are not for the public, but for the utilization of the entity performing its functions.
Got you. Okay.
Yeah. We're not finished with the Permit Criteria Manual.
If you have-
We took a left turn.
Yeah, I was teeing up here, and I jumped to something else.
Yeah, I thought we were, but-
Well, I just had a couple of comments.
Go right ahead.
And my comments are limited to the aeration. What page did I put behind it? Well, I couldn't really find the page that I wanted, so I put it on there. You must have written this, Tony.
Well, and then Bill Gates had a hand in it.
Had to bring that up.
V. V?
V.
V, is that chapter?
V and Victor.
V, VB? Can we go to the next page about aeration equipment? Is that where you're going to buy?
Item five.
Yes.
Aeration equipment. Yeah, V1, but this, I guess it's V2, it's the second page.
Yes.
We had spoken previously with respect to the aeration, Permit Criteria Manual, and we were standardizing to half horsepower compressor, that there will be no greater spacing for diffusers in the ponds greater than 100 feet, and that the turnover rate for the pond would be 100% per 24 hours. And I didn't see anything of that in here.
Can you give me a favor?
Sure.
If you could send me that language, I will insert it.
I will send it out.
Those are additional specs, and that'll be redlined for the public hearing.
Okay. Any reason we have to do this, because what we have, the general language, Lenar chose to put in crap, one diffuser per pond.
Yeah.
Just total junk. So I wanted to make sure that was specifically in there. And then under item 20.0, in the third paragraph, we talked about the installation of the concrete collars around the bubble up boxes.
Yes.
And at the time that that language was inserted, that's where Pelican was headed. In hindsight, the residents didn't like it. It created some standing water areas. So we have since abandoned the concrete collar, everything else is safe. So I just throw that out for us.
I read the, I read the language, and it's at, it's in chapter five, and it's towards the tail end, just above C, plants and specifications.
Yep.
And as far as the page is in, it's the, one, two, three, four, five, fifth page in on chapter five, and it's that second full paragraph in the middle. It says, "These basins shall be installed within the drainage easement or lake maintenance easement surrounding the adjacent lake and shall act as a bubble up box conveying the stormwater runoff into the lake. These boxes shall be installed with a concrete collar surrounding the basin to prevent damage and facilitate future maintenance."
So you're suggesting- Our experience is, the residents don't like it. And because it's very sensitive to the elevation of the concrete, it could create little islands of the bubble ups. So the surrounding area is wet, which is the exact opposite of what we wanted. So we've kind of abandoned the concrete.
So the suggestion would be to delete that-
Just delete the concrete requirement. Everything else is good.
I would do that, and again, come back in a redline version of that being removed.
Okay. Other than that, I had no other comments.
Yeah, thank you. All right. And so we'll move on to the engineer. Stephen, are you on?
Hey, good afternoon, Doug. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Today I have the lake bank or lake priority list. It's been updated over the last two weeks since the last meeting. I've been working with Chelsea and Elle and our staff to get out in the field and get eyes on all the lakes and Gateway and to prioritize them. So you have two items. You have a list and a map. The list is broken down into different colors, red being the worst and then green being the, they're okay lakes. There's nothing wrong with them at this point. Red lakes have erosion from 12 to 24-plus inches. Orange lakes have six to 12 inches, give or take, of erosion. And yellow lakes have zero to six inch, so they're really not a concern today. They would just be, you know, water lakes.
Just for tracking purposes, should we also include those that have been completed on this list?
Some of them already are because they have golf courses on them. So we took a look at all of the lakes that we've done that had components of them that weren't addressed. So like roadways that weren't addressed or golf courses that weren't addressed, and we looked at those.
Comments, Steve? 105, in the 2025 timeframe, in Hampton Greens, that pond is totally surrounded by solid rock. Why would we want to do anything to that pond?
So, this one, I believe, is, it's covered in like large-scale riprap. Behind the riprap, though, between the lake bank and the riprap, it is eroded. So there's like a space in between the riprap and the lake bank that's kind of washed away.
Okay, so that's what you're referring to. You're not talking about pulling that rock out and redoing that.
You know, it would be nice for, in this document, for us to have some more context to, if it's critical, bad, minor, you know, what's the, if it's critical, I would imagine its severity level is high. And, you know, if we had a comments or notes, Stephen, that would be nice, just so we had, so we understand what the issue is.
Well, we need, I think, two other columns. We need a column that is between the pond location and the fiscal year, one column that says either residential or commercial-backed, and the other side is golf course. Because I'm looking at ponds 101, 116, 118, and 124. Every one of those have been previously done.
Yeah, I would like-
And so I'm assuming- So I'm assuming what your guy came out and saw was the golf course side.
That is correct. That is the golf course side on especially one twenty four.
I, there there needs to be a category that is it residential facing or is it golf course? And then there should be a severity description.
That the point of getting this entire list in front of you was based on staff's review. Um the maintenance contractor's review and Tetra Tech's review. Now, if there's a general policy direction here that that the board says. If it abuts the golf course and that's our top priority and we want to, we want to move these ponds around, we can do that. If it's, we want to focus on residential, commercial, public use. Or if it's the reverse, then we'll take that feedback from from the board and we can reevaluate this.
Well, to me, pond, the pond is a pond, uh as far as the requirements of South Florida Water Management District. They don't care if the golf course is on one side or if they, it's ten million dollar homes on the other side. So I don't have any trouble with the list, but I do think what we need is to be able to identify, one, the approximate footage. That's residential and the approximate, approximate footage that is golf course. Because here's where Bob and I will totally have an agreement. The 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 level of work to be done on that golf course side.
Is minimal.
Significantly minimal compared to the residential.
And again, it goes back to the policy direction. Do you choose to do residential, commercial, golf course? That that's the direction we need today.
But here's, here's, and then here's the my other question on this.
Uh let me, let me take a stab at the direction. It was in a conservation area. Human beings are not supposed to be there. So we put it, but that is a very, very low priority. That'll go into the twenty forties if ever, if we ever touch it. If it's a commercial area, it depends on what it is. Most commercial areas here again would be a much lower. The primary focus is going to be the residents. That's the primary focus. So how we differentiate that in here, and Ed's got a good idea. Let's put down the golf course footage versus resident footage. That'll give you an order of magnitude of what you're getting into.
Stephen, feel free to chime in, but I believe that the groupings were based on the linear footage that was taken. And truly, let's bite off a measurable chunk that we we think we can accomplish. Given the time constraints of rainy season and dry season.
Okay.
Yeah, so the.
You categorized these based on basically six uh per season.
Correct.
Looks like about six per season. My, my thing is, Stephen, why wouldn't we right now? Going ahead, and once we get this modification to this table. Our next step would be to immediately authorize the preparation of the facility plan for all of these red. Get the facility plan off the table so that that's not holding us up going forward. We can then do the design on an annual basis projecting for the next year's construction.
So.
But have the facility plan out of the way.
And if, and if we're setting it up and we're addressing a lake that's previously been done on the resident side. And now we're going to address a golf course side. Again, you can do a lot more than six if you're doing a golf course side.
I know it.
Versus the residence. So the six number may not be valid. So if in this, in this sheet, particularly with the critical lakes, but we need to identify those lakes that we have done, the resident side of the house.
And just so I'm, just so I'm clear and we're all on the same page. Um when we say that repairs on the golf course side is is minimum, can we just expand upon that a little bit? We're talking about the type of material used or?
The whole ball of wax. It could be as simple as just leveling.
Rating it and bring it.
Yeah, first of all, you've got to know where where you're at on the uh LME. You've got to know where you're at on the LME. Some of these have deteriorated so bad that we're way back into the LME. So there's not a lot of room to do anything, which means we're going to be bringing in fill. But even that, that's to create the slope, get our four to one. But unlike the others where we want the stabilized stone and something that's going to last for a long time. And specifically not this litoral issue, on the golf course side, it's welcomed. They love to have their side litoral. So instead of going in and having to worry about putting this stone over there, you could go in and put in the filter fabric. And if it's not.
More acceptable solutions.
The torals will assist in your.
Yeah, okay. All right. I just want to make sure we're all clear on what, you know.
If you can stabilize the bank and get the litorals in such that you don't have a washout, there, that's your issue.
It's the cheapest thing we could do.
To follow up with that, the only time a facilities plan is required is if you pursue SRF funding. Now, if you choose to fund this in another mechanism. Then Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong, it would require design. And then putting it out to bid and getting a contract, permits as part of that design.
That's correct unless you went with a bond that, I mean, I think you've already done bond validation reports. That cover lake bank restoration, including the one that's underway right now. Um so I think you'd be covered there for another type of report.
Whether you do it with bonds or private financing, the the best place to avoid major mistakes is to get the planning done right. Don't jump to the design phase too quick. Get the planning done because it's all paper. You go and dump and do design, it's expensive paper.
So we basically have twenty six or so ponds.
I'd have the preliminaries done.
Or anything that's in critical.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna put a plan together and then we can determine funding, which would also determine.
And you can pull them out, like Bob said, you can pull them out as you need them. Because if there are a lot of golf course, you probably could go down that list on the golf course side.
Knock out.
Yeah, you might get more. Yeah.
All right.
All right, so um just to recap on what we need to do here is to update this list to include um. A a description of the severity, so like why it's red or orange. And then add a uh a linear foot for residential and a linear foot for golf course. So we know what we're exactly talking about for each lake.
Correct.
Well, that would primarily only be on the red, the criticals, I would think.
That's what I would do right now.
I would just do the criticals. Because if the critical of one oh one, the resident component's already finished and accomplished and we're satisfied.
And this puts us at a five year plan.
Yeah. We can juggle.
And I wouldn't go any further than than a five year plan, which was, which would be reasonable for six, six ponds per year. And that's, this is kind of what this is based on. So I think that's, that's reasonable.
Well, you've got, you've got six or seven of these ponds. That's what I'm trying to say. You've got six or seven of these ponds that fall in that category.
You can.
Completely understood. Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
I was just.
Steve, Stephen, do you have clear direction on what is, what is needed?
Uh yes, ma'am.
Clear as mud.
Yeah, no, it should be pretty.
It is super clear. Clear as gin.
We've ever had before, Steve.
Steve, I'll send you a spreadsheet with the blanks. You fill them in.
I appreciate this as first.
Yes, this is, this is a good start.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were on short, I mean, you know, this was brought up previously, but um you know, this was all put together from the last meeting. So it was a a lot of teamwork and um you know, it's like, it's a working article here. So we'll get it uh cleaned up for the next meeting.
And and Stephen, just out of curiosity, do we have a list like this which shows the ponds? And also with any additional descriptors? So are there aerators? Um is there any, do we need?
We have a master list.
You have a master list.
The L has something like that.
That we would eventually have in a GIS system.
Yeah, we not only have whether it has aeration with the year it went in. We know the year we did the pond bank replenishment repair, that's critical on a master's spreadsheet. It's not that detail here.
Can you also get us a one to a hundred scale map of each of these? I believe I counted twenty five that are in the red. So that we can take and look at that and then know what components of, because some of these like one sixteen's got one heck of a long golf course presence. But not all of it needed. So i- if we could have an aerial photo of each of these. We can go around and then know just exactly what we're talking about.
Here's the linear footage and here's where that linear footage lies.
And and which ponds we currently have bathymetrics on. He just, there's a whole.
Yeah.
Check. Well, yeah, well, then they just follow it up with the, with the bathymetrics.
Yeah. I agree.
Yeah, you mentioned about the asset management part and and Bob, you touched on it as well. Part of the cartograph system that we're putting in and we're working with Passarella to get the stormwater system GIS. We will be able to put in what year the aerator was installed. Um we'll be able to put all of those things in there that'll help us really keep track of.
They actually have aerated placement. For Pelican, we have the diffusers. You can look at the map and see how many are there.
Yeah, that's great.
And we'll have that as well.
If we're not careful, we might keep moving in the right direction.
And and the bathymetrics is also a layer.
We don't have the way to print these documents. That's the problem. We don't have the way to print these. Did you say not yet?
No, I told her, I asked about a plotter the other day.
Well, I, that was a lead in, so I'm glad you grabbed that.
Lauren and I had a conversation at the last meeting, I believe, about, you know, as we're setting up this um this sharepoint side or whatever. It would be nice to have a folder with maps. Um with all the, you know, maps that we would typically pull up, you know, uh aerial footage, shot uh uh pictures of ponds and stuff. Because we're always in a meeting, we're like, what does this look like? So it'd be nice to have a a shared folder.
But one of the beauties of GIS is in a meeting like is we can get it.
Exactly.
All the detail right there.
Drill rate, we'll be able to do a lot of that right inside a cartograph.
Yeah.
But um once Chelsea gets back from her world travels, um my, one of my things on my, on my punch list is to get a sh- a sharepoint. Like in intra net set up, not for the employees and then also for you guys, where we'll be able to publish these kinds of things that we can share.
Yeah, perfect. Okay. Um Stephen, what else you got?
Um that's it for me today.
There's.
We'll have a full update at the uh, at the end of the month.
A- any updating?
Task authorization for you, so what would be happening next meeting?
All, all of, all staff updates, including engineer.
Okay.
And and for Mark will be at the second meeting of every month.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um and so Chelsea, we'll move on to yours. Is Stephen going to follow in there?
He has his own item.
Of his action.
So real quick, um it's hurricane season. Uh we, we know that there's a tropical storm out there brewing. She'll, he, it will be here tomorrow. Um as part of that. Um we have circulated the EOP emergency operations plan amongst staff. Um trying to update that. It looks like it hasn't been updated in a couple of years. And hopefully come, bring that back to the board at at your next meeting for um review and approval. Um we'll get that to Tony once we get it updated. Staff is working on getting FEMA certifications that are typically required by municipalities. Um trying to get the basic ones done pretty quickly. Um the rest of them will, will come with time. Prepping, staff life, we're prepping here, you know. Where I think we're expecting wind and rain, so um today and tomorrow morning. You know, any potentially flying objects, we're trying to tie those down and um any loose ends. So uh you will see an update at the sixteenth meeting with the EOP.
We have a backup generator.
We do.
Has anybody gone out and I hope exercised the the uh gates at the uh weirs?
L, L is on L's to do list. Any storm water, any, any storm prep um is today and tomorrow. And then of course.
I hope those deals have been exercised, because if we would get nine inches, it it could be bad.
Yep.
Because the lakes have now hit control.
Yeah.
We're overflowing it all with the ponds.
Yep. We'll, we'll make sure it's on the list.
And will you just give everyone an overview of your agenda management?
Yep.
So. So everyone's aware of the purpose and.
So um for those out in the public, we have this simple agenda management sheet. It's kind of a tracking of items that are forthcoming to the board. Once, honestly, once we get the Granicus system, um it'll be able to do all of this. But um for tracking purposes, both for you all and staff, uh we want to make sure that we don't. Overwhelm you all as well as staff in one meeting. Um and that way too, you guys can add items to this agenda management. For staff to work on and come and bring back at a, at a future date. Um but you can kind of see the task items that staff is working on, not necessarily.
Fall under these meeting dates.
Yes.
So that's what you have. So it's added on this date and it's scheduled for the.
Yes.
The emergency road between Pelican and here, should that fall on here somewhere? Is that what I'm hearing?
It.
That would be an item that would be in here.
That, well, you'll get an update at the next meeting. We're working on that, but.
But would it fit in this agenda? Would it fit on here?
It can be, yes. If you, if the board chooses to add it, yes, if you want to discuss it.
I I love this and we've kind of been trying to work towards this where an item will come up during a board meeting. This is a good way for us to track it, so we don't lose sight, you know, and this is kind of what the future board business um item. And our agenda is supposed to be, is this is what's coming. And we always talk about, hey, we'd love to know what's, what's coming down the road so we can all have input. So if this is helping us uh push that kind of concept.
Well, the other thing too is it tells you how long some things take.
Yes.
Emergency access road was like November of twenty twenty and here we're in twenty two and it's still not there, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is a great addition. Thank you. Uh so Stephen, you're good with uh engineering updates. Uh Chelsea, what else do you have for us?
All right, just one last thing before I turn it over. So um the public comments that were made. Um as you can see on the agenda management, the medians at Stony Brook will come back in the July meeting once Jim gets back. We have reached out to the arborist and mains gate to provide some alternatives to the shell. Um Laura and I did a site visit today um and took some pictures and some videos, which will come back with that agenda item. On July seventh and Mark from ACOM started yesterday, so he's getting his feet wet. L's got him running around like a headless chicken, so.
And I would just say, um I'm hoping we'll cover this primarily in our board advance. Uh that we're going to have in July. Um but would love for you to be thinking about your thirty day and sixty day updates for the board, what you observe, what, what you've been working on. Where you need our support, staff, I mean, uh resourcing the whole nine yards. So I'd love to look at it in a thirty, sixty, kind of ninety day, because that's a critical time period. I think for you to get in, observe and also identify things that we need to be addressing. So, thank you. Okay, uh Laura.
Mine is short. Um I just want to remind everybody to keep an eye out for your financial disclosure documents. I think last year, some, someone to the house, some came here. We have not received any here yet, but they are due by July first. So make sure you do those. Um we purchased a twenty twenty two Toyota Tacoma uh two days ago, Tuesday. I happened to see a bunch sitting in the lot at Auto Nation, so I called and they had five. And one of them was, it fell in under budget, so I didn't need to come in. Um we actually have enough left over to make sure we get the decals, the lights and possibly add the um, the, like a toolbox stuff inside. I don't know what the cost of that is yet, but I may come ask you for a little bit more money, but I have more than enough to buy the truck.
Do we also get the um, the?
The Kubota, the little four wheel. Or, yeah, we got, it's in the, it's in the shop.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in the shop. We traded in two of our gators and got a Kubota. It needs the windshield yet. Uh it's, it's been, it was part of the, the order. They, it just was on back order. They'll bring it when it comes in. Yep, and it has a dump, the back is a dump trailer on it too.
It's a black and gold one, so it's a good car. Good vehicle.
Oh, yeah.
Good, good vehicle.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun. Austin and I took it for a ride.
Gold stuff. For orange and blue.
Any particular university colors or yours?
None I know.
I I made Austin take me for a ride right after we got it, so we could break it in. Um the Granicus, which you all touched on a little bit, we um we're getting very close. It will be implemented by the end of the fiscal year. Um been frantically filling out paperwork. I'm asking for information to get things populated and get the templates built. Um I'm working with Georgia, since she's doing most of the work, that'll be mostly her responsibility. But she and I are, we have a meeting with them on the thirteenth, I think it is. Um to to get a more firm timeline, so I'll be able to give you a better update at the meeting on the sixteenth for that. And then one final thing, we did get the annual true up from Lee County. It was over budget. Um we did budget eighty five thousand for it. It came in at a little over a hundred and twenty. I did ask Stephen to increase it to a hundred and thirty five for fiscal twenty three, just to make sure. And our rate went from two dollars and nineteen cents to three dollars and three cent for this next coming up year. So I am working.
What, what rate? What rate?
That we pay per thousand.
Water.
The water. Yeah, went from two nineteen to three oh three.
But just the water side, not the wastewater? Or are you talking the combined water and wastewater?
That's the wastewater.
That's a healthy increase.
So um I, I am working with Rich, who's the guy that we get the stuff from, to see if we can coordinate better. Uh to get this in in a more timely basis for budgeting, because they have to have all theirs done by April. So it'd be very helpful for me to get it a little earlier than the end of May.
What was the basis for the?
They did a lot more construction last year than they were planning to in fiscal twenty, because of COVID, they didn't get a lot done.
At the wastewater treatment plant or on their system?
Um.
Because we don't have anything to do with their system.
There was, they did a bunch of stuff over here. They're actually working on it right now. They're, they're installing some more things over at the plant.
Uh just, we had to watch those people.
Yep.
Uh they'll put stuff in there that has nothing to do with us.
I recall, I think we have a review timeframe to review their numbers.
Yeah, I want to check.
That's, I'm trying to get it sooner for next year. Um I have not given them the go ahead to put it on our bill yet. Uh I just wanted to just inform you of what was going on.
I'd like to understand what constitutes uh fifty percent or eighty percent raise, rate raise from two dollars thirteen to three.
They're looking just to fund future projects.
Did they provide the calculation, Laura?
I do have a bunch of spreadsheets. I'll put those, I'll get those out to you. Yeah, I will.
And again, I think if I recall, I have to go back to the book, I think the formula is in the agreement as to the.
There are, and we, and it even says in there, like, we elected to pay a flat amount every year, which is why we have the true-up. And so instead of paying a percentage of what the actual costs are, we just said, no, we're gonna pay this much every year and bill us for the difference. So I think it was last year, we ended up with a credit because of COVID. They hadn't done that much, but they took pretty much all of that stuff that they were gonna do and did it all this last year instead.
The, the thing that bothers me and you gotta watch with those guys is that you're dealing with a treatment plant over there that has essentially a capacity of six MGD. But it's actually usage, it's probably around two point five to three MGD. So if they do an improvement and they prorate the cost over the six MGD, I don't have a problem with that.
But when you do it over two.
But when you do it over the two point five, they're making me pay for somebody else's growth and uh, 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 I'm, I'm born at night, not last night. I don't plan that.
We'll do a thorough review of it and provide a written update.
Cause they are really sneaky at this.
Yep.
Both on the operating and on the capital.
You, you don't say. Lee County?
Lee County.
Yeah.
You heard, you heard me correctly.
I think it happened once or twice before.
Uh, yes. Yeah, like in two thousand and three, it happened. We got, we got it stuck up our X-axis.
I, I'll have a summary for the next meeting.
Thank you.
And Laura, can you do me a favor? Can you just make sure that our, uh, link to our lightning system is maybe a little bit more prominent on our website? I was, I was trying to find it yesterday and I, I couldn't. I remember it used to be under amenities and somewhere.
It's on the, yeah, it's on the soccer field and on the pool. They both have it.
Um, on our webpage?
Mm-hmm.
We'll get it on the webpage.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Well, I, it doesn't, at this point, it doesn't really pay because it's getting redesigned. It's gonna be launched in the next month. So, yeah.
Well, okay, if that's, uh, if, as long as, whenever we do, and then it might, if we can get George or someone just to maybe post it on our Facebook page. And then again, as we're looking at contract renewals with the leagues, I think we should put some verbiage in there that requires them to, um, have that information either on their website or communicated to, um, uh, to their parents, uh, or participants, however you wanna put it.
Another one along that line of checking stuff out in, in preparation for future things. Has anybody talked to either the airport and or FPL relative to signals or things like that, that they could be doing that would impact this community in the way of our signals and relay of information?
You're talking like the AMI system?
Specifically, that's one, but other things like the tele, uh, communication systems on pump stations, the telemetry. Are they doing anything? Cause we need to know about that. Because if we're in the future going to go chase the goose, for example, AMI, good example. We go chase the goose and find out that they are doing something that's impacting that signal, then it may be something that takes that out as an alternative.
We'll reach out.
On our telecommunications relative to the pumping stations. If we're having problems with signals.
Especially we've got a tower right here.
Yeah, that's, I, I think we need to have a communication with both FPL and the airport to find out if either one of those two are doing something that would impact our telecommunications system.
If the board wishes us to look into it, we will.
Yeah, let's do that. We'll authorize you to.
Okay.
Have those conversations.
Touch base.
They'll probably tell us no, but no harm in asking.
Um, anything else, Laura?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Not no.
Okay. Um, so we will move on to our action items. Uh, this would be, uh, six A, uh, proposed budget. So this is res- resolution twenty twenty-two XX, I guess at this point.
Who, who's doing this? Russ online?
No, it wouldn't be Ross.
I'm sorry?
It's not Ross. He does the methodology. So are we discussing the budget?
Yeah.
That would be Stephen.
Yeah, um, I guess this is Stephen. Is it an overview? It's.
He's jumping at the podium.
I have your presentation. Uh, for those of you who don't know who this is, this is Stephen Bloom. He's the lucky guy that we get to work with to crunch all our numbers at Infomark.
Where's his visitor's name bag?
Uh, Stephen Bloom, Infomark. Um, we do have a, a quick presentation for you. Uh, each year we kind of do this part of the budget process a little bit differently, but I, I do have some slides to provide some overview.
Do we have a handout on this or is it just, just here?
It's just there.
Okay.
It's in the, it's in the board stuff. It's on the, it won't be in the book, I don't think.
Are you talking about the budget?
Yes, this is budget.
Yes. So if we get started, so, so for today, uh, we, we've got some goals. It, it certainly doesn't limit the board and, and how they wanna discuss things. But, uh, obviously, you know, we're going to establish your assessment rates. And again, we're talking about your high watermark. Um, we've talked about that before. At, at this point, you know, once you establish your high watermark, then the mail notices are gonna go out. And certainly at subsequent meetings and, and, and at the, um, adoption here, and you can always reduce the assessment rate and have your, continue to have your discussions. At that point, you will not be able to increase it after today, um, because you will notice that a certain rate and that will be telling. You know, your property owners, your process owners, that this is the high watermark and you can't go from there. Obviously, we also wanna, uh, approve a proposed budget. Again, you know, it doesn't set that in stone, but it gives you your proposed budget that gets sent to the county. Uh, you, you have your, wanna have your date for your public hearing. And really the most important is to get feedback on the, on the budget changes, um, both in, in format and content. Uh, we did make some, some significant changes to the overall format of, of the budget file based on feedback. And we're certainly open and, and, and ready to make additional changes.
So if I could just chime in, this is a lengthy presentation. So if you could keep your comments or questions, just jot them down for the very end because it's a lot of information right now.
Yeah, and I'm gonna go through each of the funds really at top level, but certainly you have, uh, uh, a significant number of funds. And I wanna provide some color on each of them as we go. And then from there, we can go, um, on more details. Uh, so, um, this is basically top level assessment chart. Uh, we did provide some additional assessment charts based on feedback from the last meeting. Um, but this is kind of the more, uh, common one that we've done before. Uh, this one is area one and two. It shows you single family, uh, multi, um, Stony Brook, um, and commercial. And then it kind of gives you the total and, and really the, the key part for this part of the discussion, a comparison to fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-two. So overall, the, the single family, um, the increase year over year, and this includes, you know, the general fund, um, as well as Lake Bank. I included this. And then if you're in Stony Brook, it's in there, um, and, um, the town center. Just starting with the single family residential area one and two, uh, the budget you have in front of you, again, proposed is a nine point two six percent increase, uh, year over year.
It's a good start.
I do, yes, absolutely. And that was kind of, um, the intent. Um, one thing, and I have a slide for it, the interest, uh, Lake Bank debt services going down. Uh, we had kind of talked about that last year as the ebb and flow. The very first loan, stick rubber rebubbing loan will be ending this year. So, I mean, again, each year we assess what we need and we assess what we need based on closed loan schedules that are, you know, when I say even closed, it's past the initial drawdown period and actually a principal and interest. We are not gathering additional money for future, uh, loans. So there is a, a, a decrease in that. Overall, then getting back to that, single family would increase by nine point two six. A multifamily would be going up by eight point six five. And the Stony Brook, which also includes the Stony Brook Fund, um, would be going up by five point one zero percent. And we also are including obviously, uh, commercial in, in this particular chart. Uh, the next one is, is your Pelican Preserve. Um, very similar. We have at the bottom, uh, it's a little bit harder to read, but I'll read it out. Single family's going up seven point three percent, multifamily ten point four percent. And you can see again, this is, this is a very similar chart to last year. As I mentioned, we did start breaking it down a little bit differently in your package. And we can look at that a little bit later. This is the more, this is really more the chart that I think, um, that Tony was talking about. Last meeting that goes into the, uh, ads, uh, more or less in terms of showing the, the individual, uh, product lines. Um, next slide, and this is something new. We haven't done this in, in prior times, but this is a sample tax bill pulled right from, uh, the tax collector's website. And you can see all the categories, um, and basically looking at this, it's the, the gateway assessment uh, for this particular parcel would represent a little bit under sixteen percent, um, of the total tax bill. And if you go to the next chart, um, you can see I, what I did with this one is I started combining, you know, uh, similar, uh, items. So the Lee County portion and all that goes into that is about thirty-four percent of it. A public school is a little bit over thirty-three percent. And those two together, uh, would make up about sixty's, you know, seven percent of, of a sample tax bill. Whereas the, you know, the gateway is a little bit under, um, you know, sixteen percent. Now this, just caveat, this is based on last year's numbers. Obviously, we haven't sent out bills yet, but that's just kind of, again, giving you some color as to where you're at. Staffing plan is up next. Uh, so a net of zero positions added, uh, to next year's budget. Uh, you can see there's, you know, some changes in operations, just, you know, one here and one there, but the net is zero, twenty-seven versus twenty-seven.
What's, Stephen, let me just interrupt you for a second. What's our degree of confidence in that? Feel pretty good that we won't need adding.
We've had hours of discussions about staffing.
So what we're saying is we will not be adding heads in twenty twenty-three. We'll either repurpose or be more efficient.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, but I do want to mention, and, and we've talked about this also in previous meetings, uh, wages will be going up year over year, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars across all of the twenty-seven positions or about thirteen point three percent compared to your, uh, twenty twenty-two budget.
Yep. And let me just, for the, for the boards, uh, for education, what we're seeing in the industry is, uh, an average of twenty to thirty percent increase in compensation, um, across, across the board in all industries. So I think the, the driver behind here is we are gonna have to, um, have some incentives to keep, keep staff here. Uh, or else it's very hard to counter a twenty or thirty percent offer in a competitive market where your supply and demand is, is upside down. I've never seen it. I mean, it's been a long, long time. In my twenty-five years of kind of being in this world, I've not seen it, uh, this challenging in a, uh, in a supply and demand being upside down like this and stuff. That's, that's cheap. I mean.
Well, and to that point, that's the next bullet point here is in addition to what you have in your staffing plan, and this is something that's also in the twenty twenty-two budget, you do have separate line items. That's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars separate to kind of cover some of that gap that you were just mentioning. And it's split.
Merit increases.
Merit bonus and market adjustments. Okay.
Those are line items now.
Separate line items, meaning they're not attached to a position. They're not attached, you know, they're split between funds, but that's about as far as it goes.
We tried to, uh, let it, let us be more flexible with them, which is why Steve and I were working on a way to represent that in the budget and have those be their own line items and not be bundled in with the salaries.
I like it.
Oh, and, and I kind of, I provided a five-year trend for you in terms of, um, staffing. I mean, you're going, going back even to, you know, fiscal year twenty nineteen versus now, I mean, you basically got a net of three. And again, there were things repurposed and titles changed and all kinds of stuff like that, but you know, you really still have not seen just a large growth that you might've seen through some other governments and stuff. I thought that was kind of interesting. Okay, now starting with the individual funds, um, budget overview here for the general fund. Your gross assessments, and this is just gross numbers, year-over-year increase about four hundred and thirty thousand. Again, currently in your budget, that includes a four hundred thousand dollar transfer to your capital project fund to continue to build up your reserves. Um, there's still the hundred and fifty thousand from the enterprise fund. And then the key point here is, and again, starting at this, uh, first budget, zero use of fund balance is in your current version. I know we've talked about that in prior budget process. Right now, zero is being used in terms of cash reserves. And then, you know, throughout the presentation, I've tried to put in some additional trends to see, you know, kind of, and this one looks at your assessments and kind of lines it up. So, you know, five years ago or four from, from now, uh, single family was at five hundred and six dollars. Um, you know, some of this is after the, uh, methodology change. Now you'd be to next year at about seven hundred and sixteen dollars. And that's over, you know, basically that would be over a full five years. Okay, now to provide some kind of info on big picture ticket items that have changed. And then you can see number one right there in the net impact is payroll. So if you're going up by about four hundred and five thousand, um, in total expenditures for the general fund, right off about fifty percent of that in your new budget is payroll. And that's, you know, and that's not just, you know, pure salaries. That's the salaries and the effect on taxes and everything. But that obviously is your, your largest number. Then you got landscaping, about sixty-six thousand. Um, and then you can see the next biggest piece, the next ticket is your capital program. Again, this is for future projects. We've talked about continuing to, to build that reserve. You know, basically what this means is you're adding an additional hundred and twenty-one thousand that you didn't in your current budget. Um, and then you can kind of see from there, it just kind of tapers down. Red numbers means that the number is obviously decreasing year over year. Uh, the one I did want to point out is interest payments. You know, we are expecting the, the, uh, new bond, restructuring of the money to occur by the first end of the first quarter of December. So that's how we're budgeting the interest, one quarter of interest, uh, based on the expected, um, staffing plan capital withdrawals. And you're only paying interest. Um, if you, you know, assuming everything works as, as we say is gonna work. You're not paying principal yet on, on the original loan. So that obviously helps. Um, and that was all by design. So that kind of gives you top levels. Obviously, we've got our, the full budget that shows you line by line. Okay. And then again, more trends. We, we talked about the different categories, um, and you can kind of see, you know, the ups and downs um, of this, uh, really, you know, roadways and waterways. Those are the three categories. It'd be kind of nice to keep trending that and showing where it's going. Okay, Pelican Preserve is up next. Year-over-year, about four hundred and seventy-five thousand in terms of the increase. I did want to mention, we, we talk about the O and M quite a bit for Pelican Preserve. There is no change in the series twenty thirteen bond. Uh, we didn't include in the, uh, debt service, um, page, a, a new assessment chart that was requested for the bond. So we could actually see a, a much better detail. Um, in terms of increases, uh, year-over-year again, um, the biggest is the landscaping services. Um, the budget that you have for twenty twenty-two has six months in it of, of being kind of the amended budget. Next year we'll have a full twelve months, and that's kind of why you had the, the large increase. Um, there is a significant amount of capital that's in the amended budget this year that will not be in there for next year. And then the rest is really more about operational changes. And these operational changes in terms of admin, those are basically percentages that Pelican, um, preserves shares with the, you know, general fund and the enterprise fund. P-PAC does not necessarily have control over those. Um, they're just kind of, as the cost goes up, their share goes up. And then I again provided some trends, uh, for you as well. Uh, you can keep going. These are really more informational, um, in case. Stony Brook is up next, a year-over-year increase of about, only about four K. Um, you know, again, the, the per unit amount, because we kind of show the larger chart. Uh, but the, uh, per unit assessment amount for Stony Brook, based on the current budget, would be an increase of five dollars and thirteen cents or point seven percent. Um, the really, when you kind of look at the, uh, expenditures themselves, they're actually going down um, compared to your, the current budget. The current budget amended does have some additional costs that will not be carried forward next year. And then you can see some of the, um, same trending that I did. Uh, overall, the budget that's amended right now for Stony Brook is about four hundred, I'm sorry, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Their first version of their budget's actually going down to five hundred and thirty-two. Uh, Lake Bank, we, I did kind of spoil it on this one, but the, um, rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, their current year is a hundred and one dollars and twenty-two cents. Uh, because of the loan dropping off, it was going down to ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. And I do have in the budget package, in case anyone's interested, a full amortization schedule that shows all the loans, uh, when they will be, um, the last payment date and how much is left over. A utility fund, which is, is kind of the one that, um, has zero impact on assessments and is always kind of a work in progress as the, as the budget process moves on. as the budget process moves on. Uh, right now, there's an increase of about four percent in revenues. Uh, we have increased, um, you know, the cost of water, the cost of sewer, um, and, you know, to kind of mirror that. Uh, principal and interest loans are going up. The state res- uh, resolving loan for design is now in your budget as well. Um, we're increasing the reserve program. That was by design. And as you know, we'll talk about it more in a future chart. Uh, capital projects for next year, almost five million to fund everything. So, uh, this one is your, your general fund, uh, five-year plan. Uh, you know, we use the engineering report to kind of line up right with that. The only difference that I did want to point out, the master irrigation project uh, was slated to be in the general fund, is now they moved over to the enterprise fund. It's a little bit, it's more, uh, appropriate to be in there because of, it is kind of the master project. Uh, but certainly wanted to point that out and give the board the opportunity to discuss that. Overall, uh, these numbers should look very familiar, uh, but this five-year plan is about thirty-eight million dollars. Um, and you can see, um, the twenty-twenty-three number is about three million.
And before we go any further, is there any board discussion on, um, on moving the master irrigation over to, uh, to the enterprise fund? Everyone shouldn't, I mean, I think everyone should probably agree that's not any issues there. Okay, just want to make sure.
Okay, and then, uh, next up, the, um, utility, uh, five-year plan, which has got a little bit under, uh, fifteen million in it. And again, you know, irrigation, um, is about nine point two of the almost fifteen million wastewater is the next biggest number of about three point five. Um, we talk about this every year in terms of the five-year plan. The budget really is looking at fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. Obviously, there's a, there's a lot of great value to having the five years, and that's, you know, even more why the engineer did ten years. It really helps with planning. But when you get down to what your budget's gonna be adopting and authorizing, it is still only gonna be twenty-twenty-three. Uh, reserves. So every year at this time, I always do an estimate for you. And, um, it's always a top-level estimate. I assume a lot. And by that, I assume, you know, like repairs and maintenance. If it's right now got a low number, I don't know what's gonna happen between now and the end of the year. I'm gonna assume that something might happen so that I don't overestimate your reserves. Uh, for the general fund, right now, I'm, I'm kind of, um, calculating between two and a half to two point eight million in reserves, and that's your cash balance at the end of the day, everything off the table that you need to pay for. Um, that's, that would you, what you would kind of have left to, to work with. Pelican Preserve would be about three point six million. Um, I didn't even split it. Sometimes, depending upon how they're going, I'll like to split it by the ponds and stuff. This point in the year, I, I didn't even try that, see how it goes, and we always track that for them. Stony Brook would be about a hundred and fifty thousand. And then your utility fund would have between seven and a half to eight million, um, in total reserves, and we always talk about the connection fee, so I did split that out. It's about two point six. And again, the connection fees is, is, you know, kind of, has to be about your expansion. It's not for repairs and maintenance and stuff. Um, and then, you know, you do have the two loans now, um, for the utility fund. One's a small one for the design. As the loans, you know, close, they obviously will get added to your amortization schedule, and then you can go from there. And then last, i- is kind of the summary, um, you know, just kind of closing this out. Obviously, this is your starting point. Um, a lot of discussion between now and your, your, um, hearing. Certainly want all the feedback we can, and this kind of gives you just a, a top level, a look at where you're at. We'll go from there.
Questions?
Questions?
Yeah, I've got quite a few. Uh, can we go to the, uh, version two that we just received? General question. Uh, it was a little curveball. Why did we go from comparing version one to the fiscal year twenty-two projected budget? And then we flip-flopped on version two to compare it with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget? That was confusing.
Okay.
What did we do that for?
I think your question is where, where the projection column?
Yeah, well, you, you, out there at the right, one year, I couldn't get the percentages to match, and I found out that we, we changed. In version one, we compared it to the projection, and version two, we compared it to the budget. And it made a big difference in percentages. I wonder why, why, why did we change?
Just, just to kind of, in talking with staff, it was felt that that was kind of a better approach.
Okay.
To kind of look at it that way. Uh, certainly opened, you know, I, I I think one of the key reasons why people do not love projections is because budgets are hard. People know, they've established the budget. Projections are kind of soft estimates, make people nervous. So that's why when they look at it, they go, just show me budget to budget, stop with the estimates.
Okay, a general question also. Have you done any year-end projection of where we're at twenty-twenty-two, what we're going to be looking at in the way of surplus or deficit?
Uh, yes, I did. Um.
Where are we at right now? Ballpark.
Let me, I can go to that right now.
And I'm taking it that you're not doing anything with that right now because it is so loose?
Yeah, I mean, you know.
You're not planning on it?
No, 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 we don't. It, it's about, um, half a million dollars, give or take, between four fifty and a half million. Again, I, I really do try and give staff as much of the expenditures that they budgeted in room. Because, you know, just the timing of, of when things get done and when, you know, engineering or whatever. Um, but the way I, I kind of estimated it right now, projected about four hundred and fifty to half a million would be left over. I think you're, that's what you're looking for.
And we, we do have a little bit of an advantage over what you have until we can get into the new Microsoft system, where we have the Procurefy that shows, because you don't know what POs we have outstanding, where we have access to that. So when I send out the stuff on a weekly basis to the team, they can see, here's the bills you've actually paid against your budget. Here's the stuff you still have sitting in open PO, so here's what you really have left to spend. Where, um, unfortunately, right now, Infomark doesn't have access to that. So that's why projections are hard, because you may front-load or back-load expenses, so it's better to just do compare.
I, I would just, I would be curious to know where our surplus, where they fall.
Yeah. Going, going through the tables, the, the percentages that, and this is fantastic. We've never had this in the past. It starts to make sense when you see this. The percentages that are at the start of each one of these, as far as the district manager assistant, all the positions, those came from the table that's in the back. That's the basis.
Correct.
And then you split those out.
Correct.
Okay, good. Page eight, professional fees under admin. What, what is the twenty-one thousand six hundred? I see professional fees, HR. Is, is that a proration of, of Infomark's fees?
Is that paychecks and?
Uh, professional fees, HR, some of that is paychecks, and some of that is for the services we get from Suzanne.
Okay.
When we, when we have her. And the other professional fees, uh, that's actually you's, Infomark's fees, I think falls under there. Not the HR, the, the regular professional.
The hours falls under admin, management, and accounting services. Uh, not that one.
Professional fees is where we put Cal last year, the, uh, the outsourced.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like the guy we have from, who's here from ACOM, that's the line where his stuff would go on. And then when we had Gary and, and Scott here, that's the line that that hit.
Page ten, and this is kind of a general question. Uh, it, it looks like that we, have we been notified by our insurance agents that we're going to be seeing a healthy increase? And is that same percentage applied to each one of these accounts? I see that we were fourteen thousand, two sixteen on page ten under, uh, health and life. And this year, we're at twenty-eight thousand. Are we basically saying that there was a one hundred percent increase in insurance?
No, no, allocation-wise, though. And, you know, because what happens here is everything gets allocated. So when you say, you know, public directors at twenty percent, ten, ten, whatever, everything across the board will get allocated. So if allocations are switched year over year.
Among the categories.
Right.
So it could change.
But I, I do want to make a point that I do put in, I think it's be either between ten and fifteen percent across the board on every one of those, because.
We talked about ten.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it will, you know, I'm not saying it will, but it has historically gone up, and we don't want to get caught with that enough. But no, that is strictly an allocation issue.
The, the, when it comes to those, like the benefits.
There was an increase, I'm assuming.
No, I won't know yet, because we don't renew until January. But, um, like, like Stephen said, because we reallocated the staffing, some of those categories were different, so the overall cost of the insurance only increased by ten percent, but it may be allocated differently throughout the budget.
Okay. Page eleven, uh, this is where I've got some ads, I think. Where is what we have originally called the pond bank point repairs? Is that your stormwater system repair and maintenance? I, I don't think that's it, is it?
Those are under capital. I think we put those under capital. Yeah, those are under, they're in part of the bond, so they're under capital. They would not appear here. They're further in the budget.
Repairs nor the stone replacement that we've gotten in these ponds.
That's further into the, that's further in the budget.
Okay, remind me when we get to that. I, I couldn't find it. Uh, page twelve, um, which was what I was looking at. Okay, point repairs again. I was going with that back there. I'm of the opinion that we got to be somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so hopefully we got that. Uh, page twelve, aerators. Where are the new aerators to be put in all the ponds? Is that going to be under the SRF capital? That's what I figured.
Okay. And just a, a note to both of you, um, if our department heads are not aware of their budget and P and Ls and report out on them regularly to you, I think it's an exercise that we should be going through.
They get in, they get something weekly from me, and if there's a question, anything in there, they, they come to me right away.
Yeah, that's great.
And to that point, I do have weekly meetings set up with each department head, and then Laura handles the finance, finance aside, but if they do have a purchase question that they want to talk to me about, they schedule that as part of their weekly meeting.
Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm more thinking of it just in terms of monthly and quarterly and annual reviews. Okay, you were, this is where you have plus or minus to, to your.
They get it weekly.
Yeah. Now, some things we, they can't help, like, it's, let's say ponds.
I, I kind of hide the parts that they don't have control over.
That's great. Because, you know, I would like for us.
They're very frugal.
I know that there's some things that are come to sequencing and, and, you know, mother nature and all that kind of good stuff, but it seems historically, we, what do we average year-over-year in surplus? It's about four hundred and fifty, five hundred K.
Yeah, and some of that we do move to the reserve.
Yeah, I understand that. Um, and it's great that we are basically funding our reserves through our, you know.
Some of it, we, we carry forward because we have things that, um, maybe because of back orders, we know we're not gonna get it, so we just move it into the next year.
Understand it. My point is, I would like to be pushing more towards a smaller variance, um, because that's basically money that we could have allocated in other areas. And we do allocate. And I'm not saying that we're, this is a bad thing. I'm just saying I'd like to, for us to uh, decrease that margin, that variance, just a, a little bit. And I'm glad we're, we have a surplus as opposed to, to a deficit, which, which is good, but.
Page sixteen.
Before we leave twelve, uh, the aerator electrical service. It's sixty-five hundred, and we're looking at that stay the same. Aren't we putting in a new aerators this year? Because aerator electric, you have to be an ex.
It's gonna get up.
It's an expensive point of money.
Is there an opportunity for us to purchase some aerators this year with some of the surplus?
I hope so.
Yeah, I hope so too. But if, if it's here, if we had a number.
Good point.
How many we have, because next year it's gonna double it.
Yep.
The electric should go up.
Good, good catch.
Page sixteen. Uh, I, I thought we had discussed, uh, previously that we want to bump the Lee County Sheriff's Office presence here again. Uh, I had one that came up with, uh, LCSO last week that I learned about out in front of the boulevard by the swimming pool. Um, we got a guy going a hundred and fifteen mile an hour.
Wow.
Hundred and fifteen mile an hour. And it, it just.
Gateway Greens are.
It just continues.
Left foots.
No, it's on Gateway Boulevard. Uh, we're stopping them in Gateway Greens, but my thing is, I think we need to bump that up. We've got to slow these people down. This is insanity. So my deal would be to take that fifty thousand and bump it up at least fifty percent. Take that to seventy-five.
It's a very timely, uh, Chelsea and I had a conversation today, just about, at, at some point, maybe this is a conversation for our board advance, but you know, what I keep hearing is there's kind of three areas of concern when it comes to, um, kind of enforcement. Uh, one, speeding is an issue in Gateway and just about every HOA that, that we hear. Pelican to Stony Brook to Greens, I mean, speeding is an issue. Um, so that is one. Uh, the other is just, I would say, um, you know, just overall public safety. Um, break-ins in some of the burglaries seem to be cyclical. Uh, it hits certain communities more often than others. I haven't, I haven't heard any in a while, but about every couple of months, there's a, there's a little, there's a little string of break-ins. Um, so again, it's, it's kind of public safety. And then the, the third component is really around more of our facilities, um, illegal usage or misuseage and some traffic. Uh, when I say traffic, it's not really speeding. It's more like parking, and I'm really kind of thinking in terms of kind of our, more of our amenities. Um, but to be able to address that, do we need to increase, you know, police presence? Um, I, we can.
Is the sheriff's presence a funding issue or lack of available people? Because in Pelican, we're more than willing to pay.
It's, it's, we have to pay it to get more.
Well, we're willing to pay. We just still can't get it.
Yeah.
We're not getting problems in Gateway Greens.
Chelsea, you want to say your update for?
So, in talking with Doug today, um, this is something that we can, if, if the board wants us to do some homework on it, some due diligence to bring back. Bonita Spring, Fort Myers Beach, right before I left, and Bonita Springs, they, they utilize the sheriff's office for community policing, where you have dedicated officers to your area you pay for. I think it's about a hundred and twenty thousand per person, um, where they get to know understanding they work for the sheriff still, but they are dedicated to your area and to your community. But that, that has a, a cost associated to it.
What's the hours of that? Because we didn't talk about that today. Like, if someone is dedicated to your area, do you know what the, or what amount, how much allocation you get?
Uh, you get, you get, you get to, from, I don't know the exact hours, but I know it was roughly one twenty per officer. I mean, that's a standard forty-hour work week that includes the patrol car and everything. If this board chooses to go down that path, I would, I'd be more than happy to put together those numbers, reach out to the sheriff's office. They have a whole different unit for community policing.
That's what we do. It's about two hundred and fifty dollars a detail for a four-hour detail. That includes the car and the officer.
Yeah, so.
You're talking about something a little, on a broader scale.
On a bigger scale.
So you would, annually, you would basically fund a dedicated resource with a certain amount of hours.
But my, my point is, is take fifty thousand dollars, divide that by twelve, and divide that by five thousand residents. It's nothing.
Well, and I even think that number should be probably triple. I would, I would do more along on two hundred and fifty.
So if you, if you want to up the number, again, they're not.
Well, but here's my, just not interrupt really quick.
Because this is the impact what we're doing today.
Well, here's that. Like, we're, I think we pay, like Stony Brook, we have officers come out time to time. You're doing it here. We have to look at span and control and scope. So would it, would it be more advantageous for us to hire two, let's say, two offers, two officers annually? Um, and have their scope gateway as a whole? Or are we saying gateway commons, which is Gateway Boulevard and anything outside of communities? And then we let the HOAs kind of manage their own. So I think we need to cost benefit. So if I could save, let's say Gateway Greens fifty K, because we're included in a much larger scope, and same with Pelican, uh, or Stony Brook. I mean, again, that might be a much larger area to manage, but that's what we need to figure out, what the solution is and what's, what's the problem we're trying to solve. And I think first problem is, we have to manage the speed. Uh, and that could be police presence, radars, you know, whatever. And then two, I think it's just overall public safety and, and maybe deterrence.
Well, I don't think the sheriff's office could come to Pelican. I think we still have to stay with the city of Fort Myers.
Well, if my math is correct, if you go twenty-five thousand divided by twelve, that's, works out to be about eight hours of service you get per month.
Yeah, and so that's not new.
Spend it wisely.
Yeah, well, I.
That's my point.
So here, here's the direction that I would ask of the board, if, how you would like to proceed. Do we need to, do you want us to come back with a cost benefit analysis of additional details? Asking the sheriff, we need to take a pause.
Thank you.
Yes, one, one second. A good three-minute pause. We got a board member. Leave the room for those.
Continue.
I, I'd suggest it's always better to have.
We can wait. That's okay.
Good question. Why we got this pause? Go. I'm sorry, wait.
Steve, did you bring your computer? If we would change this, you can make a calculation quick.
Yes, again.
Thank you.
I sent you. I'll send you a new.
Thank you.
This is a side of this, doesn't impact the meeting. The officer stopped a kid, asked him how fast he was, do you know how fast you're going? And he said, well, I'm gonna go pretty fast. He says, I've got two choices. I immediately take you to jail. He's sixteen years old, just got a brand-new Camaro. Take you to jail, or I call your mom. Take me to jail. He said, I'm calling your mom. His mom came out, and I don't know if she was prepped or what. She came out and she had a baseball bat, and she broke every window, every light, everything that she could on that car. And then told, no, this is straight from the cop. And said, you get your, you know what, home. He was going to the car, and he said, she said, you walk, you ain't gonna see this car for a year.
Wow.
It's something with kids and.
But that scares me, somebody going that speed, we've gotta do something to, to slow it down. It's just scary. We did West Link's Drive in two four hour shifts in the last two weeks, and we had written thirty-three tickets. We had a husband and a wife driving together, going to a graduation, doing fifty-five mile an hour together down West Link's. The cops no longer are in the cars, they get out, and they got the gun, and they're behind a tree.
Wow.
They're catching, and we've said, no more warrants.
Have you guys put up the speed indicators and?
We don't, we don't have, we don't have a device. We're, we're, we're purchasing a gun, a radar gun, but.
Yeah, clarify that, please. Radar gun.
Radar, radar gun. The, the thing is, we're going to use it more, more informative awareness, yeah, to let people know that they're doing, but we told the police, no more, no more warrants. And by law, that, what Tony said, they're even taking it one step further, they're taking it ten mile an hour. So they don't issue a ticket unless you hit ten mile an hour.
You know, the statute says up to five.
Yeah, they went to ten. But the issue is, is that, uh, I, I, I just can't believe people going up and down these roads like this. One lady told him, I'm in a gated community, I can go any speed I want. And the cop is like, where, where are you from? That's, that's the attitude now we get back.
So, uh, we'll reconvene now that Bob's back, um.
Can you ask Mr. Guy, Flavia's been trying to talk for ten minutes, I don't show she's muted, can we just say, Mr. Guy, try to talk to Mr. Guy.
Mr. Guy, can you, we just wanna do a, a, a sound check, can you just acknowledge that you can hear us? Take your, come off of you and then.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, and Flavia, you, can you, you can't? Yeah, you can hear us, but we can't hear you.
It's something on her.
Okay, yeah, but something on your, you could dial it on your phone.
Can I make a statement about the budget for as long as I have?
Yes, sir. Yes, of course.
I'd like to, I'd like to commend Stephen and all the people who work with him on this budget, it is one of, if not the finest I've ever seen, and I used to work budgets for a long, long time. The only question I have really is, we have a, we have an enterprise fund. When he showed us the, uh, the slides early on in his presentation, he, he calls something a utility fund. And, and all of a sudden, I perked up and I said, now, is this enterprise fund and the utility fund, are they synonymous, or am I missing something?
No, they're synonymous.
I'm sorry?
Yes, they are, it's, it's the same terminology.
Interchangeable.
Interchangeable, thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Well, getting back to page sixteen, the two things I'd like to see in the budget is definitively, for the purpose of setting the bar. Uh, have Keith, uh, Steve recrunched the number of taking fifty to seventy-five and not even entertain going to a hundred? And then the other one is the capital reserve program, and I'm gonna hammer this until hell freezes over. I don't think four hundred thousand's enough. We need to go more, and I'd like to see that to go to five hundred thousand.
Pelican does three sixty-five a year, right?
And see, that, that's, if you do proportionality.
Yeah, for years.
And if we did proportionality, we would be two, two point two times that.
You'd probably be seven hundred.
We'd be seven.
What are the, uh, and I think you probably ask this question every year, I keep forgetting, so our surplus, what are the, what are the restrictions on where that money can go? Like how that surplus is reallocated? I mean, normally we put it in reserves, but is there any restrictions on where we put it?
Well, general fund stays a general fund, you know.
Okay, so it has to stay within.
Yeah, you don't take your, you know, cause you've assessed for the general fund, you don't then just take that and, you know, put it into.
But if, if we put it to capital, we can't pull it back out.
Right, but you're using it for general fund capital, really.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah. Um, so I think what, just to circle back, uh, Chelsea and staff, you guys are gonna work on security recommendations, you're gonna, um.
We'll put together some options for, and bring it back to the board, it'll probably, yep, it'll probably be the July meeting.
But my point is, is that.
Holding on.
But we can't, today's, no, we can't, because today's the last day. So what I, for purposes of setting the bar at the high water mark, I'd like to see that either the fifty bump to a hundred and the four hundred go to five hundred. See what that does real quickly on the calculation, cause I think you're talking pennies.
And here, I thought you were gonna worry, cause I bumped it a hundred.
No, as I told you all along, we, it, it just, if, I'm, I'm gonna give Pelican Reserve the, the credit they have to.
Agreed.
They have done the calculations, and we have been absolutely ignoring the advice we're getting from them to, we should be a pro rate of, uh, ratio of what you guys have, ballpark. So we should be up probably around seven hundred thousand dollars.
Well, what I would recommend is, just based on your initial conversations around community policing, if, if what we're hearing is that price is approximately around a hundred and twenty-five K, I would recommend that we.
Per person.
Per person, that we at least.
Two minimum.
Yeah.
Two minimum is what, what we don't look as at community policing. Now, you could choose, you could choose.
Say that again, so it's a hundred.
Did you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, just, Flavia, I'll give you the floor, just one quick second. So it's a hundred and twenty-five per resource, and you require a minimum of two resources, so you need, you have spent two fifty in order to do that.
Yes.
So we're going from fifty to two fifty is what we're saying.
Well, yeah, but that would be forty hours per resource, or it's forty hour, yeah, we have to be. So you get basically two, two full-time police officers in the community, and if it's eight hours a day, you would, you would determine, well, you would have.
They work for the sheriff.
Does that include the vehicle?
Yes.
So if, so if you had two resources at eight hours a day, you could have eight day shift, eight night shift, or have two during the day, whatever, okay, I mean.
We, okay, let me be very clear, they work for the sheriff's office, we don't dictate their schedule, we can, per, if we, if this does move forward and come to fruition, we would put together an agreement between the district and the sheriff, and then we would outline the expectations of that. Now, if that is the way you choose to move forward, eh, and if the intent is to reduce, reduce speeding, make those as part of your scope, true measurable task.
Very clear statement to work.
See, I've got a real problem with whether or not we can justify.
That's a pretty big chunk.
That's a chunk. Uh, I'd much rather take it one step at a time, put bumps, bump the fifty to not, I'd go to a hundred and fifty, bump the four hundred to five hundred, and throw two hundred thousand into your calculation, and what's the net on changing our seven fifteen to, or whatever that number was, to another number? I'm, I'm gonna guess that you're less than.
From a high water mark, that's not a bad approach.
And, and I don't disagree with that, but I do want, and you, when you go through, I want you to look at, like, the, uh, let's look at cost per hour. Um, if we're just doing on an ad hoc basis versus if we do the, uh, the, because we might find.
I'll give you comparative.
You know, we might have a fifty percent reduction in, in costs, which would allow maybe you guys to remove that, or if we get, you know, two officers, they could basically, it wouldn't be just Gateway, Gateway and all the HOAs and communities, if you're, you know, at, at that rate. So there might be a much larger cost benefit to the community as a whole, by investing two fifty, it might offset some additional costs and increase.
Also a pretty big problem, that kind of money.
Well, it would depend on whether or not, you, you've got all kinds of issues when you start talking about going into the associations, cause first of all, if they don't have a, a traffic jurisdiction contract with Lee County, that won't go in. You've gotta own the roads.
And most of the roads don't have a speed limit, so it would even justify putting.
That's it too, and then.
I do have.
You've got to be.
A question, Laura, Chelsea or Laura, either, do we have visibility of the amount of work that the officer is doing now, like, do we have visibility of how many tickets is he writing, or how many warning tickets is he doing? Because I think that's critical, we, we don't know if he's doing a lot of warnings, or if he's really issuing tickets, I actually like to see the report, cause we may not need to increase, we may just need an officer to really start writing more tickets, because I can tell you that I have a few friends that were stopping, they were just giving warnings, they, they were going pretty fast. So I, I caution us on going to get more service, and when we're paying for something, we're not really even sure if we're getting the service that we're paying for, cause I don't wanna pay for him just to give him warnings, I want him to pay to write the tickets if they, if they need to be written. So I'd like to see a report from Lee County Sheriff's Office on how many tickets are they writing?
And we ought to get the revenue.
I, I get an update. Every time that they're out there, they send me an email with how many people they pulled over, how many speeding, what the highest speed was, warnings, tickets, court appearances, all of that is in the update.
Two, I had reached out my first week to the captain, I'm trying to set up a meeting with him, he was on, at a training for a week, so uh, my experience and relationship I had with West District Captain is, um, if we knew we had a problem area, I could reach out and say, hey, can you increase patrols in this area, and they, they're very cooperative, so I have a.
I, I think we're getting off on a tangent, I think the money, the one fifty to five hundred.
That's all we're doing right now.
That's all we do right now, let's move on. We can talk about this the rest of the night.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to ask, ask Steve, if you add two hundred thousand, a hundred for, uh, both of those items, what impact does that have on that?
A hundred for each?
A hundred.
From fifty to a hundred and fifty, from four hundred to five hundred.
Correct.
So a net add of two hundred thousand.
Increases by fifty-one dollars for. Now thirteen point seven two percent, I'm just talking single samples.
How much?
Thirteen point seven two, it's an increase, for an additional fifty-one dollars.
Per month, you're looking at four dollars, twice earlier about four sixteen. Uh, that, that's what I would do, it, it sets our, our high water mark, we can always come back down. And as far as the rest of it, uh, I'm, I agree with Bill, uh, I went through the whole thing, uh, this best version two I think we've ever had, and I, I think we might even have a chance of not having to go into a four or five or.
That's Laura and my goal, so.
Because after you get up there, you have no idea what the hell you're even doing, cause you forgot what was in one.
Yeah, no, this is really good job, and again, having, uh, a potential surplus at the numbers really puts us favorable in a lot of different directions.
So I, I would make the motion to add those for the record, make the motion of adding those two, uh, figures, to establish the high water mark.
We'd have a motion for that, yeah.
I, I agree with that. I would just say, rec staff could do that.
Yeah.
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 Because when ultimately, the action that's gonna be requested is to approve the proposed budget.
What, there was one other one, the, the Pelican people all furnished, cause the last time we had the meeting, we had a question, they hadn't done their thing.
Everything is in there.
Everything's Pelicans.
Yeah, yeah, they've, they've got this week, we got it. As a matter of fact, we have one item in here that Laura and I have talked about, uh, on page twenty. The HOA agreement is still listed at seven forty-seven, six twenty, and we believe that two hundred and seventy thousand of that is in the fixed price contract, and both show up in the O and M, so it's high to the extent of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
With, with that, I didn't have any other questions.
That's the only thing I had on the Pelican side.
Before we approve.
Do you wanna reach out and ask Flavia or?
Yes, I know Bill said, uh, Mr. Guy, I know that you had commented, if you don't, uh, if you have anything further, please feel free to jump in, and then Flavia, I know that you had a couple of things.
I'm good.
You're good?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm good, I just wanna, um, remind folks that you, it's very difficult to tell the sheriff and his deputies who gets a ticket and who doesn't. They don't, they use their own judgment. And, uh, if we have more, more time on the street, we'll probably, they'll probably issue more citations. But, uh, I, I, my experience, uh, is that don't try and tell them what to do.
Yeah, I agree.
They work very well with us, uh, we told them, uh, ten mile an hour and over, no, no warnings.
Well, it'll get wor, it'll get worse when it gets better, i- i- and maybe the addition of the roundabout.
Let's stay with the budget.
Yeah. I'm good on budget.
Okay, well, do we need to, before we make a motion to approve, do we need to talk about the property?
Um, no, cause I think we, we have enough. We, Laura's looked at, we've looked at the funding, if we did just move forward with the nine hundred.
We have enough, yeah, we're fine.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, cause I, I've got some questions on that, we'll get to, but that doesn't impact the budget.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the proposed budget, um?
With the modifications?
With the.
Oh, Tony's waving his hand.
What I would suggest is that motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash eleven, that's the resolution approving a proposed budget for.
I'm sorry, Ed, you're, you're mumbling, I can't understand you.
Every week, sorry. I'll suggest a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash eleven. Uh, a resolution approving a proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and setting a public hearing thereon pursuant to Florida law, uh, transmittal, posting and publication, and that would be the proposed budget with the adjustments that the board has recommended that Stephen will make. And the public hearing date would be August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two at six P M.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, I'll second that motion.
In a second, any further discussions?
August eighteenth, you said?
Yes, sir.
That's the one we normally have, but that's the second board meeting in August.
Okay.
So I, I have a motion in a second, I'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great.
And Steve, that doesn't mean we won't go through this again in July, then?
Correct.
And Stephen, you give Chelsea and Laura the revised budget to pass the resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Stephen, great job on this, appreciate it. Okay, moving on, uh, this is six B, so Chelsea, do you wanna take, just, or Laura, with the overview on this particular item?
So, ultimately, the, the staff has identified a couple of locations for a potential admin building, we provided the three options. Um, looking for direction, uh, if you do want to move forward with the, um, purchase of the two parcels on Fairway Lake Strive, that is attached also as part of this agenda item document. Um, so we're just looking for direction from the board on how you, how you would like staff to proceed.
So, and we'll, we'll start with just a roundtable.
What, and since, uh, this agenda went out, I did receive word back from the South Trail Fire Chief, they are not interested in selling, they're trying to figure out what they wanna do with that parcel moving forward in the future.
Their existing parcel, so they have.
Yeah.
Have they stopped plans on the?
I didn't go into details with.
Cause they were gung ho on that deal.
I think they're limited with their spacing there, so, but he can.
With the what?
The space, it's not big enough for what they had intended to use it for.
Roundabout took care of that, yeah.
Anyway, yep, looking for direction, our recommendation is to proceed with either option two or three, uh, but we're.
What I'd like to see is, uh, I did a little research, uh, myself, and, uh, those two sites, those two tracks, uh, sold in twenty nineteen for three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars combined. Uh, that price is ludicrous. Uh, I'd like to get us to retain a, uh, commercial, uh, real estate appraiser, and come back to us with what the fair market value on those, those properties are.
So, as part of the due diligence.
We gotta go to the public with this.
Right.
We, we are in the, in public.
Yeah.
Uh, as part of the due diligence process of that, the next steps would be to get it surveyed and to get it appraised. Um, if, as, intend, with the intention of procuring the land, now, of course, um, all of that was the discrepancy of this board.
Well, we, we could take and go to a commercial, uh, appraiser right now, and just ask them for the intended purpose, what is the fair market value, and they're gonna, they'll do it based on square footage, and come back and tell us.
But in twenty nineteen, it was three hundred thousand.
The two of them combined in twenty nineteen was three eighty-five.
And they're, they're asking one point two million for it.
See, my deal is, we go out in the public and tell people that they're gonna, they're gonna have our heads on a platter.
Well, you should.
That, that's insane, but if a commercial property person comes back and says, people, that is what it costs, then we got two choices, we pay it, or we don't do it.
Anticipating this conversation, I did reach out and get a, a price on doing an appraisal of those, uh, two parcels, I know it's buried, fif, it, it would be fifteen hundred dollars.
Do it.
I think, I, I wouldn't even blink an eye.
Nope, let's do it.
I'd do it, as, as long as it's somebody that is a commercial person, not, uh, uh, what do you call it, residential.
They came highly recommended, and Mr. Tony over here is.
Yeah, they, Carol and Carol, they've been around a long time, they just appraised, we won't hold that against.
We'll hammer this.
Yeah, long time residents, Sky County, very, uh, they're credentialed, they're outstanding.
Was there anybody here in Gateway area that does this kind of work? That would be much more knowledgeable with Gateway than.
So why don't we have them, just, you got, you got approval to.
Up to fifty.
Get it appraised, and you find someone that.
Okay, um, so we told the property owner that we would let them know by a date certain, I, I believe it was either. Okay, um, so we told the property owner that we would let them know by a date certain, I, I believe it was either Monday. Um, we won't get an appraisal done by Monday, I'll tell you that much. So, um, is it the desire of the board to request the extension of this in case we do end up purchasing?
I think that's pertinent.
Okay.
Just to indicate that we, we're, we're a governmental agency. We've got to do our due diligence, and we go out and offer them that kind of a value. I tell you, I'd get shocked.
I understand, and it, and it's crazy. No, I understand, recognizing that the contract does have, uh, sixty-day free drop-in, sixty days and get the full deposit back, and we can get the appraisal. So within a sixty-day period, the board can say for any reason or no reason, no. And if the appraisal doesn't support it, that's a reason for the board to say, that's how the contract reads right now.
And, and as it sets, I assume you've, you've checked, we don't have any issues with that being an administrative site?
No.
No problem there.
And that, and that also, in any contract, that would be part of the due diligence also, to get a zoning verification letter from Lee County as to utilization.
Yeah, and, and again, I'll just state that this is what the prices are today. A couple of years ago, we had an opportunity to buy a piece of property for about three hundred thousand, and that was roadblock, um, by certain people within the community. Would have been definitely more cost effective for us to make that decision when a building was ready to go a couple of years ago.
You, you can't be talking about G S.
Yeah, yeah, the Girl Scout building. Yep, ready to go. Perfect. Turnkey, turnkey building at a fraction, we're gonna spend probably three or four times that.
Yep.
Today, so.
Yep.
Yes, sir. Evidently, Bob's in a hurry. Um, so we're gonna table this until the next meeting. Um, do I have, uh, so Fourth of July, uh, quick update on that?
Actually, we, we can't, we'll have to table this till the July meeting, because it's three weeks before they'll be able to get an appraisal, at least.
Okay, is there anyone else that might be able to do it faster?
We'll ask around.
Okay, so kick the tires on that, and we'll just, when you're ready to bring it back, bring it back.
You talk about the commercial appraisal?
Yeah.
I'll give you a name.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Fourth of July.
The agenda item, so we have, we've found all coast auctions and events. Bruce and Karen Scott, they're the ones who did the fire, uh, Christmas a couple of years back. Um, they're willing to oversee and handle this event with fireworks. So it'll be, understanding it'll be on July third, um, even though it says July fourth event. Um, and so as long as the board is agrees, you know, the budget was ten thousand, we'll stay within ten thousand. It'll be up at the Commons parcel. I'll work with Tony on getting, um, the agreement to his, his, um, satisfaction and get the ball rolling and making this actually happen.
Touch a Sunday.
Yes.
Yeah, can we, so get, go get two banners or something.
That's part of it.
You know, because people aren't gonna, yeah, we'll, we'll do a Facebook blitz, we'll send something out to all the HOAs, but let's get banners, you know, so we can publicize. Okay, perfect.
And Phil, this is, they're inviting all Pelican residents also, if they have people that want to come to the fireworks. So if you can get ahold of Castle and.
I have an email that I can send things to at that we are given, anytime we want to do communications with Pelican, um, and somebody gave me an email to send it to them so they can get it.
Good.
And, uh, I know that, uh, probably be a good idea to get some food trucks out there as well.
It's all, that's all.
So you guys got control. All right, uh, any items to pull, consent agenda A through C? I'm sorry, A through D?
Wait, 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 back up. Do you guys approve the agenda item for the Fourth of July event?
Yes. Yes. So, um, we have a.
I'll make a motion.
In a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody?
Aye.
Perfect. Can't wait. That's gonna be great.
Be back, Flavia.
First annual.
Yes.
Flavia, are you gonna be back?
Uh, yes.
Okay, nothing to pull, uh, motion to approve consent agenda, uh, items A through D.
There's a, sir, there is a correction that's needed on, uh, on the minutes of the April twenty-first meeting.
Bring that.
April twenty-sixth meeting?
April twenty-one, Thursday, April twenty-one.
That's, it's a typo in the, uh.
In the naming.
In the minutes.
And he physically and, and then in person doesn't coordinate with the motion made by the people down later on at the top of the same page.
I didn't understand.
Try that again, Bill.
Pardon?
Would you mind sta- stating the error again, Bill?
Oh, he, I can see where I have at the top of the screen here. It shows that, Doug, you were here in person, but then down here, it says that there was a vote to allow you to participate remotely.
Gotcha, okay. All right, is that, was that?
Mr. Gepper, you're missing.
Who, who is our third person there?
So it'd be Mr. Gepper would be in the top part, and then we need to move Mr. Guy, or Mr. Yeah, so that needs to get corrected.
Is there, uh, anything else?
No, sure.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all in favor to, to approve consent agenda A through D?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Uh, so future, future, uh, future board business will now be, uh, the agenda, the agenda management. So we'll replace that with this. Um, and then supervisor comments. I will start with you, Mr. Guy. Any comments from you, sir?
Uh, uh, no, sir, I have none right now.
Uh, Flavia?
No.
Done? Uh, Mr. Tinkle?
Yeah, one question. Who is the towing company that we've been talking to?
Acme.
Acme?
Mm-hmm, like Roadrunner. Yeah, the Coyote and the Roadrunner, Acme.
I don't know why I forgot that one. Thank you. That's all I had.
Uh, Mr. Gepper?
I have none.
Okay, and, uh, none for me. So with that being said, four fifty-six, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
I did, I will be late.
I'm sorry.